My name is Teresa Jones and I'm running in Sub District One. The reason I'm running is I was going to school board meetings and I was seeing and hearing a lot of things that I was dissatisfied with, so I thought instead of complaining about it, to do something about it. So, that's really the reason that I'm running.
Well, my name is Scott McFarland. I currently represent Sub District Three, which is the northeast side of town. I live up there with my wife Amber and my daughter Anastasia. I've been serving for two years now and running for reelection because I feel that there's more I can accomplish on the Board. In the past two years, I've worked quite a bit to open up our Board meetings to be more transparent. I pushed along with Mr. Looby the open policy to allow public participation at all meetings. I've worked to update our policies in terms of bullying, ensuring that parents have a point of contact in all of our schools. Worked to ensure that when we make budget cuts, that we're not making cuts that are impacting the classroom to a large extent they're going to impact anyway, but we need to mitigate that as much as possible. I fought against the closing of Wallace and Pleasant Hill. I feel that was not a good cost savings, and I just want to keep pushing for my area of town and all Springfield.
Hi, I'm Mike Zimmer, and I'm running in Sub District Four. The reason I'm running, I've spent thirty-seven years in education, thirty-four of it in Springfield. I've had a great experience in everything I've done as far as being a teacher, a coach, administrator, working in central office. I've just had a marvelous experience in Springfield in a great school district, and what I want to do is to give back to all fifteen thousand thirteen hundred teachers in this district that have given me so much.
My name is Catherine Eastfold, and I'm running in Sub District Five, which is the central part of town. I'm a parent of four young children, all of whom attend or will attend District 186 schools. So Springfield Public Schools are my family's future, and they're the future for our community and our city. And what I see right now is that we're encountering two problems: a budget deficit and a trust deficit, and those two are connected because the budget process this year has been one that has not engendered trust in the public. In fact, many people have lost trust in the district and the Board through that process. I think we need to be honest with the public about the cuts that we're going to need to make. We need a Board that can take responsibility, build consensus, and look at innovative ideas. And I would like to be an independent voice on the Board for Sub District Five who works to put in place transparency measures and look at all possibilities for cutting our budget.
Good morning. I'm Donna Moore, and I'm married to Tim, and I'm the mother of seven children. And I'm a retired Lieutenant Colonel from the Illinois National Guard. I'm currently the Fiscal Manager for the Community Resources in the county, and I'm also a former business owner. And the reason why I'm running for the School Board is because I care about our community. I care about the quality of the students that are graduating from our high schools, and I also care about the quality of the, how our tax dollars are being spent. I want to make sure that the citizens feel like they're getting value for their tax dollars spent. And on the School Board, I want to focus on the ABCs: accountability, balance in the budget, and also closing the achievement gap.
My name is Judith Ann Johnson, and I'm running for reelection to Sub District Six on the Springfield School District Board. I have keen interest in what happens to children in the city of Springfield in terms of public education and all education. I feel that I represent not only my children in Sub District Six, but the children of the city of Springfield. I am willing to speak up for them. Right now, I seem to be a minority of one person in some ways, but at least as long as my voice is being heard, people know that I am expressing concern that kids receive the best education possible. We have to ensure that children are learning to the best of their abilities, that we are providing the best services available for them. And in this time of hard economics and economic difficulty, we have to realize that this is not just a school district problem, this is a state problem.
Chuck from meeting, Sub District Seven. I'm retired from 186. I've done everything but sweep the floors there. I principled Springfield High, Laffier High. In retirement, I principled Ursula. Coached, taught, at all levels. Lot of background. And what I have seen in one of the positions that I've taken since retirement at the Regional Office was a district that was in decline. And you can say, "Well, how would I come up with that?" And I think it's very, very evident. It's become the best entertainment in Springfield. And there is an issue with a demoralized teaching staff, and because they are also impacted by that, the community's success or failure depends upon its public schools. And I'm tired of hearing the parochialism of certain districts, certain people. All of these kids are our kids, all of them. We need to start thinking that way.
Okay, thanks, everyone. We'll start the questions with Scott. What do you see as the greatest need in the district, and how do you plan to address it?
Greatest need is ensuring that we have a budget that's fiscally sound, and that includes working to build up reserves once we have found that balancing. But I want to be clear, you can't cut your way into better schools. So we're going to have to have more cuts. We've had quite a few this year, we're going to have to have more next year and probably the year after that. But we also need to find a way to drive new revenue. Part of that is working with the state to keep them reimbursing us at a level they should be. They're reimbursing us at eighty-nine percent now, we're hearing probably eighty-two next year, which is another couple million dollars we're going to have to take a hit on. So we need to hold the state accountable, but we also need to work with the community to build up, and everyone keeps saying it, we need to build the trust of this Board and this district. So when we go back to the community, because we're going to have to, and ask them for more support, they're willing to give us that support, because right now, they're not.
I would agree with Scott. The budget is probably the number-one issue. I've said this publicly many times, I'll state it again today. I think we need to start looking at programs and maybe eliminating programs that are not being successful, or at least minimizing those programs. We cannot do this on the backs of individual teachers, because as I have stated before, most of those teachers will come back that are ripped, so that really is not a savings. So I think we need to start looking. When you eliminate programs, you do not replace the personnel, and that's where you start to get savings. So I think we need to start taking a look at that. And I would agree with Scott, we need to start looking to the community for ways that they can give us help. This is not just a school district problem, it's a community problem, whether that be through grant writing, of course, some corporate sponsorship, those types of things. But I think we need to do this on a multi-year plan. We cannot continue to do this year to year. I think we need to have a plan down the road to see what we need to do in the future.
Well, the biggest issue is the budget, but it's not just cutting enough that we can balance the budget, because the businesses of our district is our children, and we have one shot for each child to give that child a quality education. So we need to look at cutting the budget in a way that allows us to replicate, to keep and to replicate, programs in schools that are working for kids who might not be thriving in other environments. We need to look at all of our options that are on the table, such as grants and private funding, things like a school within a school for capital college prep, and any other programs that might, that we might need to do that with. And just be talking to the principals and the teachers in each school, and talking to the parents and the communities, and asking what's working, what's not working, so that we can make those cuts in a way that's not only not a detriment to our children's education, but it's actually improving it.
Well, I think that our greatest need is to come up with a strategic plan. This is the current strategic plan for the school, for the school district. It's one page, okay? And I think that this is critical, because with a plan, everything else falls into place. And the plan would include, you know, several different aspects, not just student achievement, but it can also entail buildings and grounds, hiring practices. Also, the grant program and funding can fall within that plan, because with a plan, you have standards and expectations. And then each time that we meet, we can go back to our plan and our standards, what's being met, what's not being met. So nothing should be a surprise. So I think that a plan needs to be put into place, and in doing so, we'll be achieving the ABCs. We'll have accountability, we'll be balancing the budget, and we can close that achievement gap.
Part of our problem right now is that we need to stop and take a look at how our resources are working. We have people that talk about the budget, but they don't come forward with any solid ideals for fixing the budget. We talk about programs that may need to be eliminated. We need to take an evaluation of the total district to see how programs are operating. There may be a possibility that some programs may need more money. We need to look at the possibility that we might need to lower the amount in our fund balance policy. Fund balance policies were implemented just a few years ago, and if you're sitting on fifteen to twenty million dollars, that money might be put to better use educating children.
Well, contrary to what you've heard, we're not sitting on fifteen to twenty million dollars. At the first year of the superintendent's tenure in this district, we were sitting on thirty-two million dollars. Today, the conclusion of this school year, they will have one million dollars. A far cry from fiscal sanity, and we still keep doing with declining revenues and accelerating expenses and expenditures. One of the things that I would like to see happen is a very intensive review of central office, and everybody always complains about central office. I'm one of those animals myself. I've worked in it two occasions, once as a curriculum coordinator and once as assistant superintendent. But we need to be looking at ways of really understanding what the job functions are of all of those people. And I think decentralizing to a degree to move some of those jobs to the building level.
As everyone else has already stated, we do have problems with the budget. We're having financial problems. We need to relook at that. We understand that cuts do need to be made, and cuts have to be made, but when those cuts are made, they need to be made farthest away from our children. We need to relook at, we need to relook at administrative costs and see if there's places that we can make cuts from, make cuts there. Programs, if we do have programs that aren't working, then maybe we do need to look at minimizing those programs. But definitely, we need to take a look at, we need to relook at our budget.
We would like you all to talk about how you balance the needs of your sub-district with the needs of the district as a whole, and you might start with me, please.
Well, I only physically have three schools in my sub-district. Residents in my district go to several schools, but only physically three. My stance is I'm going to be a School Board member for all fifteen thousand students. Most of my career has been on the east side of Springfield, and my heart's kind of with the east side of Springfield because I've spent so much time over there, so, you know, I really want to take a look at what we can do to help residents and the students on that side of town, because I think when we talk about education, we need to talk globally. It's not just what, and schools of choice, for example, you know, I think schools of choice are important, but I think that we need to look at all fifteen thousand students and make sure that all students have some choices, and all students' parents have a voice in this district.
Well, I think as School Board members, we're called upon to do both, to make decisions for the entire district and all of the children in our city, but also to represent our individual sub-districts. So, one of the main reasons I got into this race was that I felt like the budget fight was dividing our communities and pitting different parts of a community against each other, and so I absolutely will be representing all children and their families in Springfield. But our sub-districts do have particular needs. One thing that I'm interested in in Sub District Five is the special place of Springfield High in our community, being located near downtown. Moving the high school out to the west side is not something that's been talked about in a while, but it's something that I would oppose if it came up again, and I think we need to reaffirm the place of Springfield High in our community as an important part of downtown. And I do intend to be representative who engages in constituent service and who doesn't just allow input from my constituents, but solicits it, goes back out into the community.
Well, as a School Board member, we need to connect with the community. So it's important that we connect with the individuals in our sub-district, but we represent the school district as a whole. We make decisions for the school district as a whole, and so that's what I intend on doing. But in addition, as a School Board member, if I'm elected to serve my community, I plan on forming a Sub District Five Advisory Committee, because I feel that it would be less intimidating for some people to come to, people I have on my committee, rather than going to a School Board meeting. But, you know, they're certainly welcome to come to a School Board meeting, but I just thought I would, you know, present an avenue for people to, you know, to voice their concerns and thoughts, and also, you know, to kind of get their input on some of the thoughts that I have for the school district.
I represent all children in the city of Springfield. I am, Sub District Six was carved out under the DSEC order because of minority representation, and therefore, I think I'm at an advantage, because I not only live on the east side of Springfield, but I've traveled throughout this community, and I hear from people throughout this community. And the children that are in our public schools are my responsibility, all of them. If children are given the best quality education that we can give them, and the programs, the best programs we can give them, then minority children will have access to better programs, not something that's just carved out for them. And I believe that all children should be able to learn together so that they can increase their knowledge, that they can work to be valuable citizens in this community.
Well, I think under the law, we represent, I would represent one-seventh of the community. And I do represent all of them, and what I have to do, my votes will impact, be part of all of the seven. This is the magic number, and this is four. And you have to be willing and ready to do that. But on the other hand, you have to serve as the ears for your constituents, the people who do vote for you, who you do represent, you know, as the old saying, "All politics is local." But all service is local, too. You have to hear from people. And there's all kinds of different schemes and ways to do that, but we have to do that. But as I see it, and it hasn't changed, you have to listen to your local community.
One of the things I would like to do as a Board member is to meet with my constituents shortly, if I'm elected, shortly after I'm elected. I would like to have meetings, they might be called Town Hall Meetings or little Sub-District Meetings, and find out what the needs are in my sub-district, and find out what their concerns are, and then take them back to the Board as a collective group and discuss what my constituents are asking, or what they're saying, or their concerns, and take it back to the Board, and then we all work together. And that's, that's what I think we're supposed to do, is take our constituents' concerns back to the Board, and then we all work together. We work together as one. We're one group of people working for the entire district. Of course, in saying that, taking my concerns to the district, of course, my concern would be for the entire district as well. But I think, as he said, those are the people that vote for us, so we need...
And it goes beyond the people who vote for us, you know. I don't know why this has been a point of contention, but it has been the forums. We're supposed to be doing constituent services. You're supposed to be working outside of your Board meetings. You know, I represent a part of town that has lost two elementary schools and is pretty close to the CCPA that was just shut down. So it has not been fair. It has not been even. If it was even, you wouldn't have the three schools we shut down, all in the radius of a few miles. So my area needs an advocate, and that's what I've been doing. I do represent everyone in Springfield. I do vote based on the entire district, but my area needs an advocate. Now, I am also concerned a bit when we start talking about advisory committees. I'm concerned because you see with the Community Budget Review Committee, that was a group of people who were put together that had already a vision in mind, and they drove us to that vision whether you like it or not. I like the idea of listening to every person who contacts me, and that could be somebody from my sub-district, it could be somebody from the other side of town, but we need to be open to everybody and not pigeonhole people.
Can I ask a question? Would you be in favor of enpaneling a similar committee for the next round of budget cuts?
No. I was in favor the first time, but unfortunately, politics got in the way. You know, I was the deciding vote on that. It was four to three. And I felt that we needed to have more stakeholders involved, but unfortunately, the way that those stakeholders were chosen became political. We had a fight over who was going to be the chair. We had a fight about how their meetings were being handled. There are still some minutes that aren't posted, because they haven't been approved by the committee yet. So I feel that we need to have open meetings and ensure that everyone who wants to speak can speak. And as soon as we get into the weeds of the politics of who we get to pick to serve, we run into problems, which is why I don't favor an idea of some kind of advisory committee. I think everyone needs to be involved in the process.
Mike?
I would agree with that, because, you know, when you form committees such as those, you're advocating the role of the Board. I was a little disturbed by it, because I think that's the role of the elected officials, to make those decisions. Not that you can't get advice from citizens, I think that is important, but to devise a committee like that is a little cumbersome. I think they were kind of behind the eight ball from the beginning, they couldn't get all the information that they needed. I think they were making decisions based on false information, and so I guess I would say, not that kind of committee. I would not be in favor of that at all, because I think that's the Board's job.
I do think there was an abdication of responsibility as elected officials on the part of the Board members, not because they convened a committee to come up with some ideas or to advise them, but because they took a resolution that was drafted by this committee, which apparently didn't even have access to accurate information and accurate numbers, and then they voted on it. That resolution was not even in a prominent place on the website. It was difficult for the public, including teachers and principals, to understand what was being voted on and why. And I think that the existence of that committee and the fact that the Board was apparently happy to use that as a scapegoat, particularly for its capital college prep decision, was something that really muddied the waters and, again, divided the community.
Well, as far as the advisory committee that was formed for the budget concerns, I really don't know much about the politics behind it. I know that there were teachers, there were citizens, there were former School Board members on the Board, and, you know, they came up with, you know, with their ideas. And apparently, you know, they had several meetings, and the public was invited to all these meetings. But apparently, you know, you had the same people coming to the meetings, and there were, there was very little, you know, input from the community. So what the Board decided to do is they put together a survey, and they had a great response from the survey. And so from those surveys, they could come together and, you know, come up with some, you know, cuts for the budget. So between the survey and their past experiences, they come up with, came up with their recommendations. But I do think that the school district, you know, the staff should have come up with firmer numbers for the Board to make their decision.
Would you favor enpaneling a committee?
Enpaneling, in the future?
Yes, the same sort of committee.
You know, I would just, I would look into that. And again, you know, based upon past experiences, you know, what were some of the stumbling blocks, because I wasn't aware of it.
No, I definitely was not in favor of that committee. And I don't know, looking down the table, I see maybe Scott was the only person other than myself who might have attended some of the meetings. It's a Board responsibility to assist in the development of the budget, and issues were, the budget was presented by the Superintendent and the administration, and I believe the Board summarily had decided, some members of the Board, that they would not accept any budget that Dr. Milton put forward, and therefore, that created the chaos that continued. We do have a Finance Committee that was established. I believe that the function of that Finance Committee should be to review the budget. We can start now or at any point in time and review each department as it should be reviewed properly. It's our function.
This is a large unit district, about probably the sixth largest in the state of Illinois. It's big, it's ponderous, sometimes it's cumbersome, but it does function, it does work. But you've got to get the input all the time. You can't hide from it, even, because you know, a lot of times, they put committees together, there's going to be, people are going to have interests that they own, like with the CCPs or...
CPA.
PA, but I'm glad I didn't have...
You all didn't know what it is.
Yes, I do, but I'm glad I didn't have to deal with it. People can't help themselves in wanting to drive a decision, and I mean, I think that's very normal. But what it appeared to be, from the outside looking in, is something that was absolutely unworkable, particularly when you have...
Time.
...three, three, and one in the middle.
So would you be in favor of putting together a similar committee?
Yeah.
You would? Okay.
I would not be in favor of that committee. It's my understanding that we have a Finance Committee already, and with the Board, that's one of the Board's functions. I felt that that was a smokescreen, so that, I just felt it was a smokescreen, I'll stop at that, but I would not be in favor of that at all. I think that the Board has their function, and the Board needs to be responsible for doing that.
A smokescreen for what?
I believe that there are people on the Board that didn't want to own up or to own up to those decisions, and that way, if somebody else decided to make cuts or closures, they could say, "This is what the committee recommended. It's not, I didn't come up with this, this is what the committee recommended." That's the smokescreen I'm talking about. Not being accountable.
Thank you.
Okay. Start with Catherine on this question. How do you believe the Board should work with the Superintendent?
Well, this is a very important question coming up, because we, who are on the next Board, if I'm privileged to be on the next Board, will have that opportunity to choose the new Superintendent. And we do need to make sure that we pick somebody who has a proven record of bringing people together, has good managerial skills, but we also need to take responsibility on the Board to treat the Superintendent in a respectful and professional way, to set clear standards and accountability measures, and be honest about them with the Superintendent and with the public. And I think if we do that, if we start from a standpoint of professionalism, the idea that the Board is there to set out an overall vision for the school district, the Superintendent is there to implement decisions and manage the school district on a day-to-day basis, and that we're going to make those standards clear to the Superintendent, but most importantly to the public, I think that we can do that effectively.
Working with the Superintendent, you know, my understanding is that the Board, we set the policy, and then the Superintendent, he takes a policy and he implements it. He has his staff, and he also works with the, all the principals of the schools, and he makes it happen. So, you know, in working with the Superintendent, you know, what I envision is that, you know, we talk to him about, you know, with his experience and background, and in helping us to create policies that are achievable. But then, once the policy is set, making him accountable for, you know, what's happening within the school district. But I also want to work with the future Superintendent through, you know, tapping into his background and his knowledge and experience, and also, you know, to guide me. When I go down to the schools, what does he or she want me to look for in the schools? You know, so that, you know, I'm going to be his eyes and his ears when I go visit the schools, and then we come back and say, "Okay, now, I went to, I visited this school, and this was great, but, you know, I, you know, this, I think, need a little bit of work, what do you think?" And so, you know, working with them in that respect. And so, you know, working with them in that respect, too. So, to keep accountability and to help close that achievement gap.
Well, I think, first of all, the board, seven people, needs to understand what their functions are. And I think that maybe we need to have professional development from that perspective. Our function is to develop policy and to oversee the superintendent. We must not interfere in the day-to-day operations of a school district, such as occurred here recently. We must let the superintendent bring recommendations to us. We can consider them. We should be knowledgeable and keep ourselves aware of what's going on, not only in this district, but throughout the state of Illinois and in this country in terms of education. We cannot sit in a vacuum and assume that we are in charge of something and we know nothing about it. We are not the educational experts, and I think that we must understand the difference between the functions of a school board, a superintendent, and administration and teachers.
Well, Judy, I can make you happy. I am a certified board trainer, and I've done that all over the state. And you're right. We agree.
Well, that we did, but go ahead.
But that, it is very, very difficult at times. It's, that's the art of being in public life, how you deal with these problems. I'll give you an example of a school district not far from here, that a friend of mine who was the superintendent there, said that on a Monday morning, one of the board members came into the office, got the keys to the trophy case, went down the hall and rearranged it, locked it up, brought it back. By Friday, another one came in, wanted the keys, and changed it. So, that is an example of not doing the job the right way. The policy, 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 creating stuff that will make these things happen, and...
Time.
Okay.
As a board member, it's very important that we work with our superintendent. But I think when we work with our superintendent, we need to be open, and we need to be honest with him. We need to work, we need to work with integrity. And we need to make it very plain what we expect out of our superintendent. And I think that if, when we get a new superintendent, if we define, if we define that, and we let him know what we're expecting from him, I think that's, I think that's how we should start. And I think, therefore, it's just like you do with your kids. You let your children know what you expect, expect from them, then there's no surprises. When they do what, what they're not supposed to do, and then when you have to go to them and talk to them and tell them that this isn't working, they understand why, because we've already defined what we're looking for. So, he has his role, and we have our role. And we need to respect each other's roles.
I won't be able to probably say this here in the next few months, but I'm currently the only board member who's been trained as an educator, and I still do not have anywhere near the experience to run a school district. None of us do, and none of us will. So, we need to hire someone who, we're hiring the CEO for the fourth-largest employer in the city. And part of what we're going to have to do as a board is, as Teresa just mentioned, ensuring that there are evaluations in place that where we can ensure that whoever this person is, he or she is meeting the goals of this district and this community as we move along. And I question if that was put in place well the last time around. So, we have an opportunity here to do better. The other key is ensuring, as was mentioned before, that we, as board members, are not micromanaging. I've seen the current superintendent's email, and there are hundreds of emails from some of these board members, asking minute questions that, some of them are good, but we need to allow that person to run the district.
I think one of the biggest aspects will be communication. I think the superintendent, he or she, whoever that might be, the new superintendent, needs to communicate clearly to board members their vision, so we have an understanding of where the school district's going. In turn, as board members, I think it's our job then to communicate to the community what the vision of the, of the school district is. I think probably the problem we've had, I think the community feels like we're hiding things, that we're not telling the truth. I think we need to get timely information that is accurate and correct, so we can make judgments on whatever the superintendent might want to do with the school district. I have worked with all 36 schools in this district. I'm not that far removed. I just retired last June, and so I know school's strengths, I know where they're struggling. That's something I can bring to the board, that's something I can communicate to a new superintendent.
The next question has to deal with the achievement gap. The district, every year, grows more diverse, and I did a story a few months ago, and one of the things I found out is that 78% of the minority population in the district is considered low-income. And when you look at the achievement gap statistics, that's where the, you know, the problems are. So, my question is, how do you close, actually close the achievement gap, or work to close the achievement gap, when you're, you've made the cuts that you've made in the past, particularly to those services that were put in place to do things like that? And also, in light of the cuts that you guys may be making next year? And also, do you support allocating more money to low-income schools, considering the fact that, in general, you need to put more money into a demographic of students that might not have the supports that wealthier households have, to get the same academic achievement? Start with Teresa.
Well, I'm gonna bring up CCPA. This was a school that was created to close the achievement gap. This was a school that was succeeding. This school, I understand, I think they said, had 78%, just like, as you just stated, 78% of their population receiving free or reduced lunches. But this school was doing what it was made to do. We can't keep closing programs that are successful. These children, these families, our community, we have to, this is, this is the only way that we are going to be successful, if we, if we have programs put in place.
Time. Do you, do you support allocating more money to lower-income schools than wealthier schools? If the academic achievement...
What I support is putting money where it needs to be put, and if that is lower-income schools, then that's where it needs to go.
Yeah, you mentioned that we're becoming more diverse as a community, and that's a good thing. And anyone who says diversity is a hindrance or an encumbrance shouldn't be on this board. We have a poverty issue in this city, and that is where our achievement gap lies. And we need to keep in mind, when we say closing the achievement gap, we're not saying bring the students together, we're saying bring students up. So, not only do we need support for those who are not achieving, but we need support for those who are overachieving, to make sure that they continue on that track as we go along. So, it goes on both ends there. And I'm glad Teresa brought CCPA, because that's a perfect example. Could it be run differently and better in terms of budgeting? Yes. And we have ideas on how to do that. But when you have a program that is showing improvement, and wherever you get the data, or however you get the data from, the data shows the students were improving, we need to keep those programs running, not shutting them down. We're voting to furlough special ed aides and bricklayers, but we're not voting to furlough administrators, and we're shutting down schools. This is crazy.
I really think we need to start thinking outside the box. When I was principal at Jefferson Middle School, I had noticed that the two groups that were the highest attenders in the building were black males and white males, but they were the lowest achievers, and they were also did less well in academics. And so, that's when we, as a school, developed a gender-specific program at Jefferson, and we saw immediate results. We have a problem nationwide with males, especially black males, which we need to start addressing. We talk about it, and we have a tendency not to do anything of the things we've talked about. And so, I think there are things that we can do, things that we can think about that are outside the box to meet the needs of low-income students, male students, because we're seeing a national trend. Men, in the last 30 years, have kind of flatlined as far as going to higher education, where women have steadily increased. We have to do something about that, that is an issue.
The first thing we have to do is recognize the urgency of the problem. The achievement gap isn't just something that we ought to take for granted, "Oh, it's always gonna be there, there's gonna be a racial achievement gap, there's gonna be a socioeconomic achievement gap." It's a travesty that if you are an African-American child, or you're a poor child in Springfield, that you have less of a chance of graduating from high school with a diploma that's going to help you succeed in life. What we need to do is throw the kitchen sink at this problem. Everything that we can, that we can think of, we need to look at it, we need to see if it's been tested, we need to see if it's working, and we need to try it. And that goes to Capital College Prep, other programs that are working, that maybe we can keep open in some way, we can replicate them other places, and yes, the resources do need to be where the needs are.
Okay, so I hear you saying is that if we put more money towards the schools that have a higher population of low-income children, that that would help to close the achievement gap? Well, I think that the issue is more complex than that, because at what point, how low, you know, what student population of low-income is enough to put more money towards that school? 60% of our school district is low-income. So, you know, looking at some of these statistics that I have, Metheny Withrow, 92% of their students are low-income, but their student population is about 200. And I'm taking this data from the Illinois Interactive, Illinois Interactive Report Card. So, they only have 200 students, a high-low income. But Lindsay, on the other hand, they have 532 students, but they're only 36% low-income. But interesting, Lindsay has 50% Caucasian and 50% minorities.
Right, how would you propose to actually close the achievement gap?
I think that what we need to do is to look at it differently. I think that we need to focus on cultivating a culture of learning, okay? We need to have, you know, just like when I visited Lincoln Magnet and Franklin and Capital College Prep Academy, those schools had a culture of learning. You know, you will go to college, you will graduate, and it's very positive, and that the curriculum needs to be rigorous, and it needs to be relevant. And I think that we need to look more towards focusing on our elementary schools and building a solid foundation, and to put a lot of money towards reading, the reading programs. That's how we're gonna close the achievement gap.
Well, first of all, I think that it is disparaging to judge a child by the income or the location of their home. I think that if we expect children to learn, they will learn, because children that live in low, come from low-income areas, or their parents don't have much income, doesn't mean that they cannot learn. It's the expectation that we put forward for those children that they will learn. It's also the expectation that we will expect teachers to teach those children and not stigmatize them because they live on the east side. It is an expectation that you provide, the school district will provide learning opportunities and access to educational resources that will enhance learning, that will encourage them to learn. Children, in those terms of being low-income or whatever, they are very, they do very well in math. And if they can do well in math, they can read. It's the encouragement that they are giving, given, not only at home, but in school. And sometimes, we have to accept the responsibility that they're not getting it at home, and do more in school.
Well, I think one of the keys to this, I've been involved in creating a lot of programs over a 40-year career, and the one that was the most successful that I had something to do with was something called the Bridge Program that we created at Lanford High School. We selected a cohort of kids, very carefully, from Washington Middle School. And we went to, the whole philosophy of it was, let's go to them where they are at, then bring them. You can't drag 'em kicking and screaming, but you have to do this. Worked with parents, we had them go to school during the summer of their freshman, before their freshman year. They were granted credit in English and in math, based upon the criteria that we had set. The attendance was great, but guess what I did? We, I hired two elementary teachers to run that program. And the, the whole idea of how nurturing they are, and what we were able to do, was very successful.
There's been a lot of talk lately about transparency on the school board and openness with the public. And we'd like you to talk about how transparent the board is, in your opinion, and how it's a room for improvement. Start with you.
How transparent the board is? I believe that there will always, you know, I don't think anything can be as transparent as somebody can, expects it to be. You know, they'll always have questions that they feel are unanswered. I believe that this question is really addressing the issue with the superintendent, and, and I think that that could have been handled better. But there's a difference between secrecy versus confidentiality. And because this is a personnel issue, it was confidential. But in some way, I, it would have been nice if the board could figure out how to be a little bit more transparent with this issue. But going forward, you know, certainly connecting with the community, being available to the members in your community, you know, that will enhance the transparency.
Honestly, I think transparency is a lot of bull, okay? Because everything that we do is public information. And the only thing that's not totally open to the public on the school board is personnel discussion, but after a period of time, those transcripts can be obtained. If people are interested in what the school district is doing, they have a right to come to any of our meetings on the first and third Mondays of each month. They have a right to come to the finance committee meeting, a right to come to the policy committee meeting. Transparency, I don't know what else you could do. Anything that we do is supposed to be open to the public. And if people come to the board meetings, they would learn about what's going on.
Well, I'm gonna go back to what I said earlier. The profile of kids that we brought into this bridge program, Mike and I could talk about this for weeks. If you take a look at kids who come to student review because of poor attendance, what you find, there is a point in looking at their records, Mike, am I correct, seventh and eighth grade, that's usually the place that they fall off the map. And we took those kids, we could almost predict that 90% of them would not ever graduate from high school under the current situation. We graduated 80%. But you know what? You find ways to give them a success. Most of these kids have not had a success in school for years. When they get a decent paper back with a good comment and with a good grade, that goes so far you can't imagine.
What about the answer to this question?
The transparency of the board. Oh, the transparency, oh, that? Oh, that's been pretty transparent, or it's at least has been very public in the last year. You can be, you have to be transparent, you have to try as hard as you can, and I'm gonna tell you, a lot of times, it will not suffice. Particularly if you're in a situation where there's open hostility of board members toward one another. That just does not bode well for much of anything.
And I, and I agree. One of the things that was, I just feel that, I disagree and agree on some of the things that were said. I, I do not feel that the board had been very transparent. I believe that a lot of things had been done in secret, and behind closed doors. Board meetings were not available in a timely fashion, so we're not always aware of the things that are, that are going on. Everyone, yeah, I understand that we do have the board meetings, but everyone's not always able to make it to the board meetings. But I think that, as board members, we need to be talking to the community. We need to be more, like I said, we need to be more open and honest with the community about what's going on. Sometimes, even when you went to the board meeting, you were surprised at what, what was put on the agenda, because it wasn't what, it was something different than what you'd been told earlier. So, I just, I think we need So I just, I think we need to be more transparent. We need to make sure that we are open and make sure that we're honest.
We've got to be careful not to cookie-cutter this into, oh, you're talking about the superintendent. The entire board policy needs to be set up to be transparent. And is there room for improvement? Yes. When I have sat in the audience before I was elected, one of the first big issues I saw was Fisheen parents coming to speak about their school, Fisheen Academy being shut down. They were told, "We're sorry, you didn't get 48 hours notice. You can't speak tonight." We fixed that. One of the first things I did, me and Mr. Louie and several other folks, were to get that fixed. And now you can show up the day of and speak on any issue. And that's something that we've done that has improved the board. We need to do more in that. And yes, there's always going to be confidentiality matters that you deal with in executive session, but you need a board that's going to be willing and open to speak, and I'm preaching to the choir here, speak to the media. For the longest time, we've had a board that, for the most part, as soon as, and Molly can address this, as soon as the meeting's over, out the door we go. We don't speak to anybody. We don't speak to constituents. We don't speak to the media. We need to be more transparent.
I think it boils down to telling the truth. You know, when you're asked for information, I think it needs to appear that it is truthful to the public because I think that's one of the reasons that the public has lost trust in this administration and the school board because they don't always feel like they're being told the truth. I went to several of those committee meetings, the Finance and Citizens Committee meetings, probably seven or eight of them. And I repeatedly heard when they asked for information, they were told, "Well, the people that would give you this information are too busy to give you that information." That's not helpful. That is not helpful at all because to me, that is, makes them parents that you're hiding something. And I think that's a big issue. If we're going to be transparent, if we're asked a question, I think we need to be as truthful about it as possible unless it involves, you know, confidential personnel issue. People that know me know, if you don't really want to know the answer, then don't ask me the question because I will tell you the truth.
You know, there's transparency as a legal obligation, but then there's the kind of transparency that's good for the community and good for democracy. And I think that's what we haven't seen. Not everybody can make it to every board meeting. Some people work two jobs. Some people have young kids at home who can't sit through one of those marathon meetings. And let me point out as an aside that when a group of parents who hadn't gone to board meetings before did start showing up at board meetings and making their voices heard, that in many cases, they were derided as a special interest group and ultimately their children's test scores were leaked with the names attached. But when it comes to transparency, we need to change our mindset. It needs to not be, how much do we have to make public? How much can we keep private? It needs to be, can we make this public? It needs to be about communicating clearly about the budget, making those documents available in easy-to-read format, not just saying, hey, you can come to our meetings, but going back out into the community. I've heard that consistently. Don't just knock on my door when you're campaigning. Come back and talk to me. Any follow-ups?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I heard something interesting on the radio today, so I just, and I don't know if it's fair, it was WMY, it said Donna Moore said that, consider a pay freeze for teachers and I guess that-
Wait, what was that?
Consider a pay freeze for teachers to solve the budget.
Oh, really?
I don't know if that's accurate or not.
No, that's not accurate.
Yeah, it is. I listened to the interview.
Wow. Did I say that yesterday?
You said you would consider it.
Oh, consider, oh, okay.
Consider it.
I know, I know you at least said, it was either consider or support, and I can't remember which, but you definitely mentioned that.
Well, I have to listen to that again.
Yeah, I can't wait for them to get the podcast up. I want to listen to the whole thing again, but yeah.
I'll have to listen to it again.
How about a comment on that?
Well, Jim had recommended, you know, he suggested a possible pay freeze. And I agreed with that, that I think that that would be appropriate because of our budgetary concerns right now.
For teachers?
Excuse me, yes, for teachers, yeah. But, you know, the crux of my answer though was to have an efficiency study done. And, well, I don't know about that answer, but, you know, the crux of my answer right now is that we need an efficiency study. And we need to see how, you know, money is being spent within the district, if it's being, you know, used wisely. And, you know, with the teachers too. I mean, if we can cut costs in one area, then that could, you know, make available funds in other areas within the district, you know, i.e. the teachers. And the other thing too, which I thought of later was that, you know, we need to take a look at how many teachers could be conceivably retiring this year. And, you know, and that would also free up some funds too. Or even encouraging teachers, you know, to retire early, so.
We honestly need others to answer the same question.
Yeah, oh, yeah, sorry.
Catherine.
Okay. First of all, I wanted to mention to the efficiency study, I think we do definitely need to look at what people are doing, particularly in the district office. When it comes to actually hiring a firm to do an efficiency study, you know, I work for the state and I've seen how these things go. A lot of times when you hire particular firms, you expend possibly tens of thousands of dollars and you get a nice bound report with a pretty cover and you're kind of right back where you started, except you have less money. So I'm not sure that's the way to go. I think ultimately we need a little bit of leadership, the board, to step up and say, yeah, there are going to have to be some cuts. Let's start at the top. Let's have these people lead by example. As far as teacher salaries, that's something that we're going to have to look at in collective bargaining, what the arrangement is going to be for the next contract for the next two years. I want to work with SCA on this. The relationship between the teachers' union and the district and the board has been very collegial in the past. I believe that they understand that we've fallen on hard times here financially and they're willing to work with us. Our teachers are our greatest asset. And so we need to respect them, respect their professionalism and the great things they're doing for our children.
Does that mean you might argue for, like, no increase for a couple of years in the next contract, or what do you say?
I want to wait and see how the collective bargaining negotiations go.
I think we need to be very careful here. I think Chuck was right when he stated earlier, the teacher morale in this district right now is probably the lowest I've seen in quite a while. And so I think we need to be careful about how we proceed here. They're already fighting class size increases. They're being asked to do more and more with less and less time to do it. And I'm not necessarily, I guess the point I'm trying to make here, even if they have to take a freeze, I think we have to be very careful about at least saying to them, we will move you a step across the salary because if they take a freeze, they're going to lose money because we all know insurance is going to increase, probably income tax at some point will increase, and they're going to end up taking a cut. And I'll have to say this, we do need to take a look at administration, but I will say this to you, in the last three years, our administrators across this district have taken a freeze, the last three years.
Well, ditto to most of that, but, yeah, we as board members should not be going out in the public and saying, oh, we need to cut, we need to cut these guys by 10% or we need to hold them to this or that because it does terrible things to negotiation and to morale to your employees. These are your employees you're working with. So I'm not going to give you a percentage, but what I will say is, last time, we did give them a slight pay increase, but they pay more for insurance premiums. So in the grand total long run, we actually save the district money, okay? In terms of pension shift, when that happens, when it happens, they're going to have to pay more for their pensions. So we can't go in there and say hard freeze because we don't know what we're looking at in terms of budgets. We don't know what the pensions are going to look like. We don't know what insurance premiums are going to look like. And these folks get bashed on quite a bit, and I was in a classroom, so I know they get bashed on quite a bit. Here's the deal, they don't get paid enough as it is. We can never pay them what they deserve to be paid, but we need to treat them like professionals.
And I think we have to be careful as well. As Catherine had said, teachers are our greatest assets. I can't be definite with that answer because, number one, I think it, when we're talking cuts or we're talking freezes, I think it needs to be a shared sacrifice. We're talking about getting a new superintendent and I don't know that anyone has discussed how much money they would pay the new superintendent. I think we have to be careful, especially when we're dealing with our teachers, talking about decreasing their pay, to me, to freeze their pay is a decrease. I don't know how I would vote for that right now. I would have to talk with my other, with other board members and we would have to, we'd have to come up with something. But I, once again, going back to, it needs to be a shared sacrifice. We can't ask, we can't continually ask things of teachers that we're not asking of leadership. Tom?
Well, you know, when I was in a leadership role with the SCA way back, we did some things that were very, very creative with the contract to eliminate, in one year I can think of, over 150 RIFs. This is a big district. It's a big, this big thing that we have probably 150 people that retire, leave the district. I mean, it's, there's a lot of in and out. And with that comes great opportunity in negotiating something that if somebody leaves, how you fill that vacancy, or do you fill that vacancy? There has to be some flexibility there. And you can do that and it can be done. And I think a lot of people would be surprised how many folks would like to take a look at that issue. Judy?
I think the teachers, on the last contract, they didn't get a full-blown raise, so, and they didn't even endorse me. And I told them that, you know, I've been one of their greatest supporters. But we have to consider that they do get step increases and then they do get raised, a raise. There are some issues, I think, that would be better handled on the state level if there was a single solitary insurer such as state employees get for health insurance and those kind of things. We have a third party that negotiates our insurance premiums, and I don't think that that's fair to our teachers. I don't know how they survive when they try to pay for health insurance. Teacher morale may be low, but we've been doing the best we can do. And I think that's just for certain individuals. But we have a great responsibility to make sure that teachers are getting the best they can get. And we are not the final determinant. Contract negotiations are what this is about.
Closing statements, please. One minute for each of you.
Yeah, we appreciate your time and two of you are unopposed, Scott and Judy, but the rest of you can take this minute and talk to the voter about why they, voters should support you in this election. Chuck will start with you as the senator. What I'd like to say to the public is that the time is going very, very fast. And things continue to unfold in this community and this district and a continuous weakening of the system. We need to act and we need to act pretty soon. With my 40-plus years of experience, I've seen all this before clustered in different ways, but I've seen it. We'll get out of this. And we just can't continue to cling to this hand-to-hand combat. There has to be a way to bridge that.
As a senior member of the school board and one who doesn't have any opposition this time, I appreciate the opportunity to have served. I appreciate the opportunity to continue to serve. My focus is always to make sure that we get children the best education possible, that we provide the best environment that we can for teachers to teach in, and that we have an open dialogue with parents who feel that they are welcome into our school system at any point in time. I would also have always encouraged people to come to the school board meetings. And I've heard some excuses up here today about, well, people may be working a couple of different jobs. But remember, the school board meetings are also put forth on Channel 22. I work in the legislature and there are some legislators who tell me, oh, I saw you on TV last night because it's their public side. So you can, there is no excuse to say that you don't know what's going on in Springfield Public Schools.
I think that my varied experience as a military officer, as a former business owner, and also as a fiscal manager in community resources for the county makes me a very good candidate for being a member of the school board. And I think that I would bring a different perspective to the school board. And I'm a good listener, too. My idea of forming an advisory committee in my sub-district, it's my way of saying that I want to connect more with the community. And also the efficiency study, that's my way of telling the community that I want to hold the district accountable for, you know, the jobs in the school district and the efficiency of the school district and making sure that the school district is effective. And so in doing this, I want to focus on the ABCs. And I'm asking the residents of District Number Five, I'm Donna Moore, and I'm asking for your vote.
We're at a critical juncture right now in our school district where we're dealing with diminished state funding, we're dealing with a still recovering economy, we're dealing with a budgetary crisis, and we need the community to pull together. And instead, unfortunately, in the last year, we've become bogged down with petty squabbles, with divisions, and with secrecy. And I want to be part of taking the school board and the school district in a new direction so that we can be honest with the public, solicit their input, and take some responsibility for our decisions. I'm a parent and a concerned citizen. I'm involved in my parents' schools and invested in this district, and I care about all of the children in our community. And I think that this election and the new direction for this board is absolutely critical for where the city of Springfield is headed in the future.
I think what I will bring to the board is experience. I've spent 37 years in the field of education, 34 of it in Springfield. I have worked with all 36 schools in this district. I know what their strengths are. I know what they're struggling with. I know the things that I can help do to help them and help the superintendent. When things are brought to the school board, I will understand them because I was in on the planning on common core standards, the new evaluation system, all the behavior programs in town. I was in on the planning, the professional development and the implementation of this program, so I understand all of them. I have a great commitment to Springfield. My daughter went all the way through school. Springfield Public Schools is now a teacher in this district, and so my family has a great commitment to the education of Springfield. So I would say, April the 9th, please vote. Please vote for me in Sub-District Four.
The past two years have been an honor for me. You know, when I sat in this building two years ago, not many people even knew who I was. And I was kind of a transplant to Springfield, but I stand by my record. I feel that I've been an advocate for the people in my sub-district and the people of Springfield. I'm looking forward to doing that again for the next two years. We have to realize that the time for studies, the time for paying somebody to come in and look at us, the time to form committees and ask people for, a group of people for their advice, that time is over. We need a board that's going to seek out information from all stakeholders and then make decisions. And when we do that, we have to have a board that's going to be willing to tell you what those decisions are going to be. We can't be political about this and say, well, I'll look into it, I'll do that, maybe I'll do this, I'm not sure about this. We just need to decide what we're going to do and move forward as a district. And I'm looking forward to this board. I really am looking forward to this group of people who are up here and who were here yesterday because I think we can take a turn and move this district in a better direction. And that's what I'm looking forward to be involved in.
These past several years haven't been very pleasant for our district. We've closed, we're consolidating schools. But we need to work together. But despite our differences of opinion, we need to treat each other with respect and we need to work together and come to, and find a common goal and achieve that goal. I get a little nervous when I'm in front of everybody and I have to get my points across, but my heart is in it. I have a child who has a hearing impairment. She's 13, and she's been in the district all her life. And this district has, the school's been good to her. She's had great teachers. It's been a great experience for her. I want to be part of this. I want to be part of the solutions. I want to work on this school board with six other people, seven, you know, and eight including our superintendent. I look forward to that and I solicit your endorsement.
Thank you, everyone.